I want to welcome everyone to tonight's Muskogee City Council meeting for this May the 23rd, the year 2022. Before we get into tonight's business, we have two items we want to address. The first item is I'm going to yield the floor at this time to Chief Teehee. He's going to recognize National Police Week as well as the Muskogee Police Peer Support Team who traveled to Washington DC. Chief Teehee.
Thank you Deputy Chief or Deputy Mayor. Yeah, just you guys know I brag as often as I can on my police department. I think I've got the best that there is around. And this is another thing we get an opportunity to rest, to ask, talk to them about because they've just got back from Police Week in Washington DC. We sent seven total? Sent seven officers. One of them couldn't be here tonight, but they were selected to be able to go. It wasn't something we just said, hey, let's, I think we'll go to Police Week. They went up there as part of the peer support team to help with the, obviously you guys probably are aware that we've had record number of officers killed in the line of duty over the last two years. And these seven officers from Muskogee went and specifically to help other officers. So I wanted to recognize them tonight so the city knows what they're doing and that they're doing it on a national scale. So I want to, I just want to thank them and have them recognized tonight.
Second thing we want to do before we get started with tonight's agenda items. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to represent the City Council as well as the mayor at a function. And the proclamation didn't make it in time. And so I assured the veterans that we would give them ample recognition on tonight. So at this time, I'm going to yield the floor to Kenna, who's assistant clerk, and she's going to read the proclamation that should have been proclaimed on this past Saturday.
Whereas the submarine Batfish is credited with sinking nine ships in World War II, and whereas the submarine Batfish has the record for sinking the greatest number of enemy submarines in a 76-hour period, and whereas combat awards earned by the Batfish and her crew include 10 Bronze Stars, one Navy Cross, four Silver Stars, nine Battle Stars, and one Presidential Citation. And whereas in April 1973, the Oklahoma Maritime Commission transferred possession of the USS Batfish SS 310 to the Muskogee War Memorial Park Authority. And whereas the Muskogee War Memorial Park honors the 52 American submarines lost in World War II, and all those submarines and submariners who have been lost in service to their country. And now therefore I, Marlin J Coleman, Mayor of the City of Muskogee, do here proclaim May 21st, 2022 as War Memorial Park and USS Batfish Day in the City of Muskogee, and urge all its citizens to remember that all gave some, but some gave all.
Thank you. At this time, if you'll stand, we'll have our invocation led by Council member, Mr. Alex Reynolds, followed by the flag salute.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, please forgive us of our sins, those which we have knowingly committed and those which we have committed without our knowledge. Father, please bless us tonight as we come together to do the business of the city. Please give us level mind and help us work for our citizens. Please watch over and guide our employees, the loyal citizens of Muskogee. Please help us make good decisions and move forward at the best of our ability. Father, please watch over and guide us as we just heard about the Batfish and our veterans. Thank you so much for all of our veterans who have sacrificed for us both here and overseas, those which made it home, touched by war, and those which did not make it home. Please bless us and watch over and guide us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Marlin Coleman, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed,
Here.
Ivory Van,
Here.
Jamie Stout,
Here.
Alex Reynolds,
Here.
Stephanie Jones,
Here.
Tracy McGee,
Here.
Tracy Whoos,
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Here.
May we have a motion to excuse our mayor tonight?
I salute. Second.
Have a motion and a second to excuse the absence of Mayor Marlin Coleman. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Yes.
Tracy Whoos,
Yes.
Tracy McGee,
Yes.
Stephanie Jones,
Yes.
Alex Reynolds,
Yes.
Jamie Stout,
Yes.
Ivory Van,
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. At this time, we'll consider our minutes for May the 9th as well as our emergency call session for May the 9th as well. If there are any questions on our minutes or any corrections on our minutes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve our minutes. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Yes.
Tracy Whoos,
Yes.
Tracy McGee,
Yes.
Stephanie Jones,
Yes.
Alex Reynolds,
Yes.
Jamie Stout,
Yes.
Ivory Van,
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. All right. We'll go into our regular agenda at this time. Item number one, please.
Consider approval of a contract between the City of Muskogee and Hilldale Public Schools to furnish two uniformed officers to provide law enforcement security functions and act as the school resource officers for the school district campuses or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reeves.
Good evening Deputy Mayor and council members. This is the standard annual agreement we do with Hilldale every year. The school board did meet on May 10th and approve it, and the amount was adjusted for next year's wages. So that's reflected in the contract, and staff recommends approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this agenda item. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Yes.
Tracy Whoos,
Yes.
Tracy McGee,
Yes.
Stephanie Jones,
Yes.
Alex Reynolds,
Yes.
Jamie Stout,
Yes.
Ivory Van,
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number one passes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of lowest bid from Waste Quip in the amount of $598 for two-yard metal dumpsters or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, we have this item on there today. We're looking to buy 40 to 45 two-yard containers. This is probably going to stay under 25,000, but there is a chance that it may exceed that. And because of our internal bidding policies, if it goes over 25,000, it takes council action. So we thought we'd just go ahead and get that anyway. This is buying two-yard containers. Again, we're going to buy 40 to 45 of them at 598 bucks a piece. This company is out of, well, there are several places in Texas, but it's basically a Texas-based company. So we're going to have to freight to get them up here. And that's why we're a little concerned over the price. But we do recommend approval and I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Stewart? Have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Yes.
Tracy Whoos,
Yes.
Tracy McGee,
Yes.
Stephanie Jones,
Yes.
Alex Reynolds,
Yes.
Jamie Stout,
Yes.
Ivory Van,
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number two passes. Item number three, please.
Consider approval of awarding the Muskogee Davis Regional Airport Airfield Lighting Rehabilitation and Improvements Construction Project in the bid amount of $783,860.57 to Third Generation Electrical Incorporated, pending approval of the Airport Board or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Actually, Mr. Saffill, our airport manager's going to address this. And I do believe he has our engineer from Olson with us as well.
Good evening Deputy Mayor and council. Yes, our engineer Brian Coombs from Olson is here if there are any detailed questions that I cannot answer. This project's been in the works for, going on five years now. Just because of the scope and the estimated cost of the project, it involves replacing all of our approximately 300 runway lights with, lights and signs with LED fixtures, all new cable and conduit, many miles worth underground, rehabilitating our electric volt regulators, new wind cones, new airfield guidance signage, precision approach path indicator lights, runway end identifier lights, et cetera. It's a comprehensive lighting project for our airport. The bids on this came in very good considering the inflation we've had recently. The engineer's estimate was 1.324 million, of which a good portion of that, if the amount came in, you know, say over our total AIP amount, we had FA AIP, excuse me, FA discretionary dollars lined up for this project. But we don't, we aren't going to be using much of that because the low bid came in at 783,860. The high bid was 1.7 million. So there's a huge difference there. Our engineers, they reached out to and made sure that the contractor was comfortable with their bid price and there were no errors, and there are not. The contractor has done over 25 lighting projects for airports in the state of Oklahoma in the past five years. So they're very experienced. Only over 3.5 million dollars worth of lighting projects were, they've done just for Tulsa Airport Authority. This has been approved by the Airport Board at last week's Airport Board meeting. And I recommend approval. If you have any questions, I'm sure I or our engineer can answer them for you.
Thank you. Any questions or?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this agenda item. Any discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Yes.
Tracy Whoos,
Yes.
Tracy McGee,
Yes.
Stephanie Jones,
Yes.
Alex Reynolds,
Yes.
Jamie Stout,
Yes.
Ivory Van,
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number three passes. Item number four, please.
Consider approval to accept lowest bid from FN Construction LLC in the amount of $85,000 for the new recycle center building, project number 2022018, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Actually, Mr. Reeves is going to address this one.
Bids were received for construction of a new building to replace the FEMA building that is currently on site at the recycle center at 120 Iola Street. And FEMA, the FM Construction was the best and lowest bid at $85,000. We did speak with FM Construction and they were comfortable with the bid and the construction of the project. The bid did come over, a little bit over our budget allocation, but we will be receiving future funds from Incor, who we partner with on site for disabled individuals. So staff does recommend approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this agenda item. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Yes.
Tracy Whoos,
Yes.
Tracy McGee,
Yes.
Stephanie Jones,
Yes.
Alex Reynolds,
Yes.
Jamie Stout,
Yes.
Ivory Van,
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number four passes. Item number five, please.
Consider approval of a consent agreement with Rural Water District Number One allowing the city to sell treated water within portions of the district's boundaries in and surrounding the John T. Griffin Industrial Park or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of council, the Port of Muskogee has engaged in discussion with Rural Water District One for purposes of being able to allow the city to sell directly to customers within the John T. Griffin Industrial Park. Generally speaking, the city is not permitted by federal law in order to sell water within a rural water district. And that's generally because most of these rural water districts have federal loans. And the federal government, of course, wants its money back. So they want to prevent any additional, any other competition, which would maybe allow them not to get paid back. And so in this instance, Rural Water District One does not have any federal loans, and so there's no federal prohibition. But nonetheless, the port authority did reach out to Rural Water District One to ask for their consent to allow the city to service customers outside of the city limits within the boundaries of Rural Water District One, within the John T. Griffin and surrounding area. So the Rural Water District One Board did meet and agree to grant its consent, which is reflected in the proposed agreement attached to the agenda item. This would allow the city to sell those, sell water direct to those individuals, both industrial and residential. This would assume, I think, six current customers. And so those are all the current customers that would be converted over. And what normally happens when we sell water outside of the city limits is we have a contract that is much like the Rural Water District contract, but it is with an individual. And so if there are any future needs for someone who comes in and wants to be able to have water from the city, then they would follow that same process. Come in, meet with the inspections Department, pay for the meter, get that, get it installed, and then we would service them and provide the water in those cases. So everyone has agreed that this is in the best interest of the city to be able to provide water within the John T. Griffin Industrial Park. Port Director Scott Rob, Port Director Emeritus Scott Robinson is here if you all have any questions. But with that, this has been reviewed by the Public Works Department and the City Manager's Office, and there are no objections to this agreement. So as a result, we do recommend approval. Happy to answer any further questions.
Any further questions for Mr. Tucker?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Yes.
Tracy Whoos,
Yes.
Tracy McGee,
Yes.
Stephanie Jones,
Yes.
Alex Reynolds,
Yes.
Jamie Stout,
Yes.
Ivory Van,
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number five passes. Item number six, please.
Consider approval of an authority having jurisdiction agreement with the Oklahoma State Fire Marshal, providing the City of Muskogee with authority to conduct plan reviews and associated inspections within municipal boundaries to ensure compliance with all current state adopted building codes and standards, as well as the Americans with Disabilities Act, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
This is effectively a housekeeping matter, Mr. Deputy Mayor and members of council. Every three years, in order to continue to issue building permits and conduct plan review, cities across the state are required to enter into agreements for granting them status as the authority having jurisdiction, which grants the ability to issue those permits, conduct those plan reviews, and things of the like. The Fire Marshal's Office, the State Fire Marshal's, State Fire Marshal's Office will conduct those reviews, but they prefer not to and only do it in cities where they don't have ample staff to be able to do it. In this case, we do have Fire Marshals who work through this. We have our inspections Department who work through all the international codes to ensure that they are properly enforced, and plan reviews are conducted for all new building permits, renovations, and the like. And so our agreement with the State Fire Marshal is expiring. And so we have been asked to renew that agreement for an additional three years. And so that is what we are presenting before you today for your consideration. Staff does recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this agenda item. Final discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Yes.
Tracy Whoos,
Yes.
Tracy McGee,
Yes.
Stephanie Jones,
Yes.
Alex Reynolds,
Yes.
Jamie Stout,
Yes.
Ivory Van,
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number six passes. Item number seven, please.
Discuss and take action to authorize the purchase of all-weather gear for city counselors in accordance with Council Policy 1-11, actual unnecessary expenses, or take other necessary action.
Council Van.
Yes, this is my item. I put it on the agenda tonight. Ever since I've been on council, I get calls when it's raining and it's raining hard, that a lot of these grates and stuff in Muskogee, they're stopped up. And sometimes, I mean, a lot of times I go out and unstop them myself because I know the city crews are busy. And so it makes it easier for our city crews. And also now that we have this policy in place that I can purchase my weather gear myself and get a reimbursement. So it's nothing I'm making up. It's been like that for quite some time. And I've been on the council eight years and unstopped quite a few drains. But I don't get out in a ditch and try to take no, nothing to try to unstop a drain, you know, a covert or something like that. But grates I do. So I just thought I'd bring that to your attention. That's what I'd like to have when I have to go out here in this rain for my constituents. So I'd like for you to make that motion to pass this for me.
Any questions or discussion?
Move for approval. I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second.
May I ask a question? Is there an amount or just any expenses that are related to this?
You might want to put a.
You know what I'm saying?
There needs to be a cap on it.
Cap.
So if I could make a suggestion, if this is something the council wants to do, tie
it to the general employees, union contract, the union contract, because they get a, they get an all-weather voucher. And Jennifer, do you know, remember how much that is? Maggie?
Maggie might know.
Do you remember how much the amount of the vouchers for all-weather gear? She's looking at it, so. I'm sorry? Oh. $160 is what the AFSMI employees get for.
Sorry, $160 for boots and $100 for coats.
So 260, 260 for all-weather gear. Okay. So would the, I think you made the motion councillor and you seconded, to include maximum reimbursement of $260 for all-weather gear?
So let me, let me ask this question also before we go there. When we say all-weather gear, is that specific to boots and coats? There may be some of us that may not be interested in boots and coats.
That's why I've categorized it as all-weather gear.
Okay. And so can you be a little broader with, you know, what that may entail?
Well, that would be rain jackets, rain boots, anything that would protect you from the elements in order to go out and meet constituents, assist them with things like that. I mean, the category is as broad or as narrow as you all want it to be.
So what category would stuff like the shirts and stuff fall into?
Well, you're talking about in the policy Deputy Mayor?
I'm just saying, when we have our council shirts and so forth, you know, all of us are probably not interested in getting the, the rain boots and so forth. So is it just for protective against the weather or?
Yes. Per councillor Van's agenda item, yes, it would just be for that type of protective gear, not necessarily a general clothing allowance.
Okay.
Would that also, I mean, if he wanted to, for Derek's question, if he wanted to get hats and say sunglasses or something for the summertime, if he was going out for that, would that be protective?
You could do that, but we would need a separate agenda. This agenda item is specific to all-weather gear. But yeah, no, you could certainly expand it to include some level of clothing allowance. But this was, this is just specific to all-weather gear, the boots and rain gear and things like that.
I don't need no summer clothes. I mean, I'm always, you know, I got, I got sunglasses.
But we could certainly put that on another agenda if you'd like.
But I don't know about y'all, but I, I mean, I'm the only one that gets to call a lot of calls for his drain being stopped up. Matter of fact, it was a, I'm going to say this, and I shouldn't say it, but I had an incident happen last week. And it was in Millen Valley. We had a tree was in, well, a limb was in the ditch. And Mike remembered this. And that tree, and I sent him pictures. So it's nothing I'm trying to make up here trying to get weather gear from the city and blah, 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 that I can go buy myself. I mean, you know, since me going out and helping my, I like, I mean, I'm a one-on-one councillor. I go with my constituents when they call. I go see what they want. And I see what they want because I put these workers, we put these work orders in. But for an example is, this tree was in the ditch and it was rotted. So the tree department went back out, cut the tree, cut the whole tree down. But the problem I had with it was that they left all these scraps. And I just waited for about two or three days to see if they would go back and remove these scraps from around the ditch. Because Millen Valley, I know it's not like country club, but we want it to be. And I don't want all of, all that stuff in my community where I lived. And so they didn't. So I made a work order and I've sent pictures. And so they went out and they got it done. But they was just this close, this, this close from a drainage ditch. All they had to do was take a rake, a shovel, and move that debris away from that drainage ditch. You think they did? No. I did it. And I made a work order and they still ain't came back and put it in, you know, picked it up yet. That's the truth. That's just an example. So it's not something I'm up here trying to make up. These are reality stories. I've had many, many more. So I'm just saying. I don't want to see you think I'm trying to get over on y'all wanting sunglasses. Now if y'all want to give me sunglasses, hey, I don't mind. You know, hey. But I'm just saying.
Okay. Any other discussion? So what's amended?
Yeah. So the, so the proposed motion would be to approve authorizing the purchase of all, get all-weather gear such as boots and hats for a maximum reimbursement of $260. And I would say per fiscal year. That way we can appropriately budget for it.
Mr. Tucker, this may be off the topic if it is we do, but say that a council member goes out and clears out a drain and gets sucked down the drain and gets hurt, who's responsible for that?
The council member.
The council member. The city doesn't bear any liability on that?
No, because the, no more than they would a private citizen.
Okay.
And so, you know, for purposes of, you know, the law, city, city council members for the Government of Work Claims Act are called, are identified as employees. However, they're not covered under our workers' comp claim because they don't have job duties such as cleaning out drains like that. So, you know, it's one of those things we'd have to take on a case-by-case basis, but it, the city wouldn't automatically cover that is my point.
Oh, anything to go down the drain. I can swim, but I ain't going down the drain.
Does that answer your question, Dr. Whoos?
Yes.
Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Yes.
Tracy Whoos. Tracy McGee,
Yes.
Stephanie Jones,
Yes.
Alex Reynolds,
Yes.
Jamie Stout,
Yes.
Ivory Van,
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number seven passes. We do not have any citizens signed up to speak tonight, so we'll go to item number eight.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A. Pursuant to Section 307B to Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local Number 2465, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B. Pursuant to Section 307B to Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters Local Number 57, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
We have a motion to go into executive session?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Yes.
Tracy Whoos,
Yes.
Tracy McGee,
Yes.
Stephanie Jones,
Yes.
Alex Reynolds,
Yes.
Jamie Stout,
Yes.
Ivory Van,
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item passes. We now consider ourselves an executive session for those who are not on the council. If you could clear the room. Going to return from our executive session. Roll call please.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed,
Here.
Ivory Van,
Here.
Jamie Stout,
Here.
Alex Reynolds,
Here.
Stephanie Jones,
Here.
Tracy McGee,
Here.
Tracy Whoos,
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery,
Here.
Mr. Tucker.
Item 8A, pursuant to Section 307B to Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, the council convened an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees Local Number 2465. After being briefed on the status of those ongoing negotiations, I think no